Good afternoon, I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this committee of the whole of the city council. First time we've been back in this room for a meeting since like 20, I guess, 2020, something like that. It's a gorgeous room, former board of almanchamber for the city of Winston-Salem.
We might need to knock out some walls for a bigger room.
Okay. So tonight, this afternoon, we're basically doing a kind of a unique thing. We're combining four committees into two. One, really, we're going to be looking at. What we're going to do is I'm going to call a meeting together, which I have, and we'll have the roll call in just a quick second. But we'll then go into the consent agenda. If there are any items that need to be pulled from that, we'll refer those down on the agenda to the appropriate committee for consideration. When we come to the individual committees, I'll turn the meeting over to the chairman of those committees, such as Mayor Pro Tem or Councilman Taylor, et cetera. So let me just ask the city clerk to call the roll calls.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
All right, thank you all for coming. Our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant Jeffrey Thompson. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us today. Tonight's, I guess, tonight's, today's agenda of the, is comprised of the items from four committees and their consent items on this agenda as well. Items on this section will be enacted with one motion unless a council member requests it and IMB removed. Councilmembers, I've had a request to pull item C5 as well as item C22. Are there any other items?
C17.
C17.
C8.
Eight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we will move those down to the.
C14.
C14.
C14, was it C4?
No, C14, John. 14, okay. And 17, would you, Clark? And C8 was?
Yeah. I move for approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor of approving the balance of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. That is unanimous. So now we'll go down to the general agenda, which is comprised of new items that we haven't dealt with. And the first section are, is the Community Development Housing General Government Committee. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tem Adams to preside over this. And we've added two other items, three, what were those, C5?
14.
Oh, 14. Eight, 14, okay.
14.
We'll try to keep up.
Yeah, you're going to have to help keep me straight.
You got to.
Thanks, everybody, for being here today for the Community Development Housing General Government Committee. And since we have some consent items pulled, if I'm correct.
Yep.
We will start if the clerk will call the first item under Community Development.
C5, resolution authorizing annual submission of continuum of care homeless assistance grant application, acceptance of grant funds, and execution of sub-grantee agreements.
Councilmember Monday.
Thank you. That's loud. I don't really need a report. I just want to take this opportunity to say, as I have said many times before, our continuum of care is not the best way to take care of our homeless people and our citizens who are affected by those who are homeless. It may have been a system that worked at one point in time, but it needs to be reworked. And I don't know what to do that, do about that. And I certainly am going to accept this, or propose that we accept this grant, but there's a better way to do this, and I wish we could get to the bottom of that. Having said that, I move for approval of C5.
I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilmember Monday, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Are we voting electronically? Okay?
Yes, you should be able to.
We'll see if we're.
And for those of you that don't know, Councilmember Clark, Monday, and Cipio, and myself, are on the Community Development Housing General Government. We did have the vote on our screens, our own screens. Did everybody vote unanimously? Just kind of raise your hand, please, Councilmember Clark. Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Would the clerk please call the next item, C8?
Item C8, request for a public hearing on 1818 North Dunlith Street, Northeast Ward. Ordinance ordering the demolition and removal of a structure. Public hearing set for September 3, 2024.
You called it, and Councilman Cipio.
I don't need a presentation.
Okay.
I just need to make a comment and ask a question. On this particular property, it's a multi-unit, and the repairs that are estimated are only And we have a shortage of properties that could be affordable. My question is, can we have, as a municipality, can we do something other than demolish properties, then, instead of demolishing, but be able to rehab them? If we could, if there's a way to secure the property and the city could then repurpose it and put it back into use? I just don't know if there's a way to do that as a municipality.
I'd be happy to answer that question. The ordinance actually gives direction to the property owner to, depending upon the category, to repair or demolish. And if the property owner does not do it, then the city has the ability to effectuate that. Historically, the city, if it was an option, repair and demolish, would demolish the property. But you do have the option to repair and place a lien for the repair of the property, on the property, just like you place a lien for the demolition of the property. A lot of times, the factor will be costs associated with that repair versus demolition. But yes, there's a mechanism by which you do it, assuming the council could find the money to make those repairs in the event the property owner did not comply with the ordinance.
That's good to know, because I was under the assumption that we didn't have that ability, that the only ability we had was to demolish. So it's good that we do have an option in the case where the owner just does not take care of the property. So that's good to know, thank you. And with that, I move for approval of C8.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Moved and properly seconded by Councilmember Monday, Councilmember Cipio. Would you all please vote?
Attorney Carmen has another.
Yeah, just one point for clarification, in case you thought that the city would end up with title to the property. The title still remains in the property owner. I want to make sure you all understand that. We would just have, the city would just have a lien for the repair.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it's going to come up.
Unanimous.
But it's unanimous.
Okay, it should come up.
Thank you. There it is. Well, they got all of your votes. Doesn't count. It doesn't count.
Oh, sorry. This is committee members.
That's okay. We're good. We had a unanimous of the committee.
Gotcha.
This is all new to us. Again, we haven't been in this room since Kitty was a cat, so we all learning again. Would the city clerk please call the next item?
Item C14, request for a public hearing on ordinance to amend chapters three and 10 of the Unified Development ordinances to revise Board of Adjustments procedures. Public hearing, September 16, 2024.
Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I will call my attention in this particular section and maybe throughout other parts of this ordinance, is dealing with stormwater. And I know stormwater has been an issue in our development department for some time because of the difference between what the county's regulation is and what the city's regulation is. And I know that also we're getting ready to apparently appoint an advisory committee or commission on stormwater. I thought maybe somebody could just brief us briefly on what our stormwater policies are and what the intent is of this new commission.
That's not me, so I'll go sit back down.
I think it was C15 instead of 14.
Yeah, Councilmember Larson, I did not hear your comments from the back row, but happy to answer any questions on the stormwater side, sir.
Well, the question, the question really is, we're getting ready apparently to establish a stormwater commission to oversee something. And I'd like to know what that something exactly is, why the commission's being formed, and what the current policies are that warrant the establishment of a commission.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So this is brought forth before you because of some permit changes or a new NPDS permit for the city's stormwater program, as well as some legislation that was passed last year in the long session. And basically, right now, as far as administratively, any illicit discharge that the city has right now is routed through the Public Works Committee and City Council. And I'll defer to the city attorney here on the legal process or whatnot. Right now, it is better to take that through, and that's why these UDO changes are forthcoming, through a board or a commission like the.
Board of Adjustment.
Sound and Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment, excuse me. So basically, right now, what you have before you is to change that old process that is not legally founded into one that it is legally founding, meaning going to the ZBA instead of the Public Works Committee for administration of these illicit discharges and post-construction NOVs, which is a quasi-judicial board, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. And I think Councilmember Larson's question may have been about the new committee, which is a requirement of the permit, the stormwater permit that we have. And so this is a way to give citizens an opportunity to provide, excuse me, to provide feedback with respect to that permit.
Correct. And the advisory board would serve in a different capacity, where they have a chance to review the city's stormwater management plan, which is the compliance document for that NPDS permit. They would have a chance to review as a citizen committee and comment on that stormwater management plan.
What does this have to do with the stormwater tax currently and the water bills every year?
It has nothing to do with the stormwater utility fee. It just has everything to do with compliance of the city's new stormwater permit.
And how is this committee appointed?
Like any other committee, through the mayor, sir.
Somebody wants to participate, they file with the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like to make business information? Is this for voting or what?
Yeah, I think we may have pulled item C14, but I think Councilman may be referring to item C15.
That is correct. So I think you need a motion to basically correct the first consent item, so that it was, item 14 was adopted as a normal consent. This is item 15, and then you need a motion to approve item 15.
Just make a motion to approve C14, since you've really already approved 15.
Oh, excuse me, I'm not on the public. Are we approving C14 or 15? I'm looking.
14, because he pulled 14.
So that is ours. We do 14.
Even though he asked for 15.
Move approval.
Okay.
He's got it.
Just a second, Robert.
I told you, everybody knew this going.
Just a second. I move approval of C14.
Right.
It's been moved and properly seconded, item C14, all those by Councilman Clark, Councilman Cipio. Would the committee please vote?
It will come up with everybody.
Okay. It's unanimous.
Yeah.
Now.
Really, committee of the whole.
Is that it? That's the only action we need to do?
You got the general items.
I think C17.
Yeah, but I'm talking about 15.
Those are finance.
Okay.
15 is good.
You go into G1.
Could you call the next item, item C17, please?
It's G1.
It's finance.
It's finance.
Sorry about that. It's finance.
So I'm done? Am I done?
General.
Generals.
Okay.
Must be the room.
It is the room.
You tell we're just back from vacation.
Item G1, resolution authorizing the forgiveness of the remaining housing finance fund loan, located in the Northwest Ward.
Northwest Ward.
Okay. Good? Okay. So, G1, I mean, let me ask for some clarification. I'm sorry, wait a minute. So I'm doing everything community development. I got that.
Yeah.
So, including the general items, or do we going to go back to Councilman Clark for his items? No, I'm going to do everything that's mine. Y'all should have gave the instructions out. Anyway, G1, please.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the committee of the whole. Samuel Hunter, Assistant Neighborhood Services Director. This is item G1, requesting forgiveness of a loan in the balance of $156,869.89. In 2001, the Housing Partnership of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County was provided with a loan, a housing finance fund loan in the amount of $426,000 to repair a property on 207 North Spring Street. Now that they have new prospective buyers, the property owners, the new prospective property owners are requesting a forgiveness of the balance of loan, of the $156,000 loan, in exchange to promote affordable housing in this area. They are requesting to have, they're going to have a total of five units, two studio, three one-bedroom apartments, and then they will also secure additional financing from private financial institutions to administer the repairs of the home. I do have representatives from the Spring Street Co-op present today to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do it, Councilmember Cipio.
Just one quick question. They are prospective property owners and not the actual ones of record right now?
Correct. The property owners of record are the Housing Partnership of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. The new prospective property owners are the Spring Street Co-op LLC here in Winston-Salem as well. So they are, they will not purchase the property until.
The lien is removed.
Exactly.
Okay. And so actually, we're approving, removing it from the housing partnership.
Contingent upon the sale of the property.
Contingent upon the sale of the property.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's really, really interest, clear. Now, I think the Spring Street Co-op is a novel idea, but I would like for someone to actually explain it to us.
Okay, fantastic. And I forgot to give a little bit of history about this. You all previously had an action on this in 2019 with a, with a different prospective property owner as well, but that one failed through, so now we have someone else at the table. So we'll hear from them, okay? Steve?
Good afternoon, council. My name, my name's Steve Virgil. I'm a lawyer in town and teacher at Wake Forest School of Law. I'm happy to answer any questions about cooperative ownership and the structure of this, of this, this project that we put together. I will note, never ask a lawyer to talk, so it's, I will begin when you're ready.
So my daughter's a lawyer, so I like to hear lawyers talk. They tend to bring a lot of information to us. Just clarify, how is these, what's the structure of the co-op going to be? And who's going to, who's involved in it?
Yes. So it is organized as an LLC under the North Carolina Limited Liability Company Act, because that gives a lot of flexibility to how you can create relationships among people. North Carolina does not have a very good cooperative law, somewhat antiquated. So as an LLC, it'll have six members, the five individuals who will live at the property, and one nonprofit, housing, nonprofit focused on affordability in our city. That housing nonprofit will have a golden vote to assure that this co-op remains forever in indefinitely affordable housing for the folks who live there. The five members who live there as members of the LLC co-op will have what's called a limited equity position, that they will pay a monthly fee that covers the note on the property for rehab, maintenance, et cetera, and then a little extra for essentially savings, you know, sort of element. It's limited in that there's a ceiling, that each member, over the course of their living there, can end up with $2,000, $3,000, what looks like equity, but it's not really equity, that they can leave with and go on to something else in their life. The co-op structure for affordable housing is becoming very popular around the country. I work nationally with these efforts. I work here in North Carolina, but also efforts in Baltimore, Detroit, Denver. I've worked in many, many places around the country. And the idea is to take economic relationships that people are involved in paying rent and create mechanisms that allow them to build assets that lead to life improvement over time. I'll also note that our country is built on the notion of property. Throughout our constitution, there's a clear idea that individual citizens, their liberties are informed by property, the reach of government is limited by property. For me, the co-op gives a way for low-wealth individuals to participate in the citizenship that's afforded by property, and so it serves broader societal goals as well. I think we presented a, Dr. Rose is involved in this as well, I think we presented a hundred-plus-page.
You did.
Overview of the structure. But I'm happy to answer more.
So if the current co-op members have wanted, say they move out, is it replaced, they are replaced with the next tenant that had, it's sort of like a homeownership kind of association?
Exactly.
And so does the co-op is responsible for any major, all major maintenance issues in the building and the insurance and that kind of thing?
Absolutely. And on that last, I'm sorry, councilman. On that last note, we have some additional information. The Winston-Salem Foundation is very strongly supportive of this project. They've indicated their support to help us underwrite a contingency fund, reserve fund for major repairs. We have Piedmont Federal is also supportive of this, contingent on the transfer of the property, et cetera. We also have a property management company that I've worked with through my clients in other parts of the state who are also willing to, if they can provide services, provide those services here, or if not, help us navigate bringing on a property manager going forward as well.
I think this is a great idea. I think that when we think about reducing poverty in our community, it can be a tool that helps lift people out of poverty. We have a growing poverty problem in our community, and I like the fact that you got other partners in the community to support this initiative.
Thank you. Mayor Joins.
Thank you for being here today. I just trying to understand how it works, I guess. There are five units there, if I'm correct, but there's a six-member co-op board.
Correct.
It said the sixth member is the board itself, and that board can veto the actions of the other members. So how does that?
Can I clarify? There are five members who are residents, individuals who live there. The sixth member is a nonprofit, HJN Co-ops, which will be an ongoing, ideally, developer.
Didn't say that in the writing.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize, I'm wrong.
So it is another outside nonprofit that.
Correct.
And it can veto the action of the homeownership board.
Correct. And the nonprofit assures, just the nature of a 501(c)(3), that resources that go into this development are now and forever committed to affordable housing. So I think we have a 30-year request for affordability, but it really is indefinite, that the structure itself disallows anything other than affordable housing under the criteria we've defined.
And what was the name of that nonprofit again?
HJN Co-ops.
HJS. Thank you.
Councilmember Monday.
I'm going to move to approve, but I do have a comment, then if anybody else wants to ask questions. But this property, most people have probably never seen. You can't see it from Spring Street, you can't see it from Second Street. But I was on AIDS Care Service Board for four terms and on staff for two years. This is where we housed our transitional, our clients with transitional housing while our housing manager looked for a more full-time opportunity for them. The horseshoe, as we called it, was, was one of the most vibrant places that our, our clients lived. It created incredible community among these five people. They stepped up for themselves. Now, at the time, AIDS Care Service did not own this. I believe that, that it was, we paid rent to the city or there was an arrangement. But this arrangement with co-op, these folks have to step up and do their own work. They have to step up and raise their own money, and this is really putting their money where their mouth is, so to speak. And I know from experience that putting five people in those close quarters really, really does build community. So with that, I move for approval.
I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
I have a second. End of discussion. Councilmember Clark, Councilmember McIntosh.
I agree.
Okay.
I have had two sons that have lived in co-ops, in New York City and in Chicago, I understand the concept, but that doesn't concern me. Is it correct that these have not been lived in for some time?
I believe that is correct. I do not know the time that they've been empty. Dr. Rose?
I believe AIDS Care Service ceased operations in 2016, and it has been vacant since then. However, there have been squatters there, there has been illicit drug use there. Since we've been able to contact the owner, Jane Milner is here, the ex-director of the former Partners for Homeownership, we have now signed an option to purchase the property. And with her blessing and with insurance in place, we have gone in and cleaned up this property. We worked with Twin City Harm Reduction Collective and got Sharps boxes and cleaned up used syringes carefully and appropriately, took out human waste from these properties, and have secured the property, and it has not been entered in the last year.
When you were in it, was the water in electricity on?
No.
Okay. That's fine, thank you. Oh, my first comment is, property that has been that vacant for that long concerns me as to the cost to bring it back up. You may have on and off water faucets, the things that are frozen that you don't have to replace. I saw you've got some estimates in here, but my first concern is, do you really have a realistic assessment of what it's going to cost to bring something back into operation that has not run? It's like a car. If you don't run your car for seven years, you might as well throw it away. And my guess is you would have to replace it. A lot of the plumbing, the HVAC, you may have doors that stick or whatever, but what I'm looking for, and I don't see it in here, is what it's going to cost to fix it up. I'm looking for a kind of a P and L of what you expect the rents to be, what your ongoing cost would be, you know, just kind of how it's going to cash flow. Because my biggest concern is, and I've owned a, and Jeff's probably the authority on owning property here, but houses cost more than you think. Things break. What's the condition of the roof, for example? And my concern is you're bringing in low-income people, and if you don't have an accurate assessment of what it's going to cost to bring it up and to maintain it, you may have owners that can't afford to keep it up and then it just goes back down again. So I would like to see some more information in that area before I can make an assessment. Because what I don't want to do is to be doomed for failure because the numbers won't balance, and suddenly you get in there and you need all new. and suddenly you get in there and you need all new everything, and your costs are three times what you thought. We've just had that picture of that apartment, that they said they could fix that building up for $20,000. You can't get anything done for $20,000 these days. I just want to see what you're going to fix, what your rents are going to be, what's your estimate of roof replacement and this, that, and the other, so that I don't want you to be doomed for failure before you start, and I would like to see that.
May I respond?
Yeah.
So I think we have provided a P and L in the document. We also are very encouraged by the fact that our original budget built in a reserve for such repairs, but now because of the foresight of the community foundation, it looks like that will not be necessary. So that will give us sort of a double on that reserve amount. And also, Dr. Rose has brought in general contractors and individual inspections for the roof and, I believe, the sewer. So while no things are absolutely knowable in this world, we do believe that we're hitting pretty close to the cost. Do you want to?
So I believe you had asked, was the electricity on? No, it was not, but we have turned it on, and the lights do come on now. We haven't turned the water on, but yes, we had a sewer scope when we did the inspection. We had the roof, the entire property's been inspected. And we, yeah, we have now, the chief of the Inclusive Economy at Winston-Salem Foundation, Charlie Gardner, is recommending to their grants-making committee that they fund an emergency maintenance reserve, because we have the same concern, that low-income people coming in, catastrophic event, water pipes burst, what happens when that happens, if that happens? And so, yeah, we already have a plan to finance $20,000 in emergency maintenance reserves, and then hopefully the Winston-Salem Foundation will be able to double that and have a $40,000 emergency maintenance reserve on the property to.
I didn't see the number, so if you could just provide it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I want to say, in the 100-page attachments you guys gave us, Dan, I love the homework. It has a scope of work in it for the funds being raised and the additional funds to be loaned by Piedmont Federal Savings Bank, and it has your breakout of your rehab budget, landscape and exterior paint reserve, and all of that, including the operating budget estimated at the bottom. Councilmember McClark has a good point. We don't want you to fail. We want you to be successful. That's why we can throw out all of these questions, but most of you know that. Councilmember McIntosh?
First, let me say, I love the idea.
I do too.
I've got a son who just went under contract on a house after three years, trying to buy a house. He makes good money. It's really tough to buy a house. I've been a realtor for many, many years, and there's no better way to build wealth in America than to buy a house, own a house. So building equity, building wealth is, you know, one of the best ways to do it. So allowing people to get into that stream of building wealth is, you know, highly appreciated. That said, I have turned nine houses, nine buildings in this neighborhood from, turned them from rental properties into single-family properties. In town, mostly in inner-city neighborhoods, in town, I've done a couple dozen of them from rental to homeownership. So, I mean, I get the game, I understand it. This property was not a well-built property to begin with. It is, it will take a lot of money to fix. I did not see in here numbers that allowed me to do a dollar per square foot calculation. How big is this building? How many square feet is this building?
Just under 3,500 square feet total.
And how many dollars per square foot do you have allocated to fix it?
Whatever, about $200,000 in renovation costs divided by, I haven't calculated.
Okay. I think that's way low. Chris Murphy is the guy who's going to, his staff will give you a C up. Turning on the electricity and seeing the lights come on is way short of being able to say that your electricity is safe to have people living in that property. It being unlived in for seven years, you've got a lot of work to do to get, to make sure that your electricity is up to code. I think your dollars are way short, which means your ability to sell those units to people for what you're anticipating, those numbers, I think, are way off. So I would rather see you come back later on with better numbers to us that makes me feel comfortable and us feel comfortable, that you can have people buy these and be able to afford them and be able to fulfill that dream. The other issue that I have is on page 42 of our thing here is, there's a piece of paper that talks about access easement. There's not legal access to this property. There's a parking easement, there's not an access easement. Okay? So you can get to it, you can walk to it, you can drive to it, but there's not legal access to this property. So before we commit to forgiving a loan for you to own this property, I would much rather see a chain of title that shows that you can get to this property legally. So before we rush forward and say, we're going to commit $140,000, I would much rather see a clear picture that that isn't the case. I could be wrong, but I've read a lot of deeds, and I don't see where that is the case.
May I respond?
Yes.
I believe, and I did not include it in the 100 pages, I guess 101 would have been better, but there is an easement for access through, and Ms. Milner might be able to speak to it, that there was an easement created for access through the alleyway. Now, I don't know if you consider that to be public access, but it is a shared alleyway for 209, 207, 205 North Spring Street. I believe that exists, and I can forward that to council. It took a long time for me to find the parking easement, but I believe I saw the other one too, and I thought the primary concern was going to be off-street parking, which we have, so.
My history with these properties goes back 40 years. I don't think that's correct. I'm going to abstain on this when it gets to full council. Let's talk about that. But I don't think that's right, and I don't think we should commit to that until that's cleared up. So let's move past that. So.
We're not committing today, are we? Will this go on to full committee?
Yep.
So this would go to full council?
This will go to full council. So you would have some opportunity to do that homework and bring it back?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
The next time we vote on it. But today is not a genuine commitment, it's just the first step, I think, right?
But I do have a question.
See, the mayor got my gavel today. That's okay, thank you.
So those are questions that I have.
He has the floor. Then I'll recognize Councilmember Monday, Councilmember Sipio.
I'd like to know what happens to your pro forma if your costs are way out of line, and also what happens if you don't have legal access to the property? So, you know, can we go, can we get to full council if those issues are not answered? Those are my questions.
Councilmember Monday.
I'm sorry for interrupting. I was just clarifying the next step on this, ensuring that this was just the first step of two.
Councilmember Sipio.
My question was going to be, why would we have lent money on a property to the other agency if they didn't have clear access?
Good question.
Who's done before us?
And if it, well, I would believe that they would.
Good question.
Yeah. So can we just check on that?
Attorney or planning zoning waiting.
Mr. Murphy didn't.
I have not done the deed research. I did look at, this property is on PBS, it was rezoned to PBS back in 2001, and there is a condition of approval related to an access easement for this particular lot. Like I said, I have not sat here and actually looked up the deed book and page number references referenced in the deed that I'm looking at to see if it was in fact recorded, but that was a condition of approval related to the original rezoning. So I will, stay tuned.
Attorney Carmen.
And I'm in the process of trying to locate the access easement and also talking to the attorney for the partnership, because there was a property line issue also back in the day.
Thank you. Councilmember McClark.
Staff, what are we spending per apartment for the apartments we're fixing up, or is it over in Ms. Burke's quarter? Who can?
Willie Davis.
Willie Davis. And what are we spending per apartment there?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Does anyone know? I thought it was 75 a unit.
I'm not sure off the top of my head either.
If y'all wanted a data point, those were units that needed some work, and I think that number is 75 a unit, but we can get you that, just as a data point. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion on the floor. Motion by Councilmember Monday, seconded by Councilmember Sipio, authorizing the forgiveness of the remaining Housing Finance Fund loan at 207 North Spring Street. We are, if you're ready, you may vote.
Oh. Hang on a minute. Thank you.
And there is the vote, only committee members can vote. Can you push that back? Councilmember McClark abstained in three.
Pat said we're committee of the whole, so we all vote.
No, no, just the committee. See, I told you the instructions. We didn't get the instructions. So we have three, four, and one abstention. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask, will you see one of the state people who are not committee members?
Thank you.
Any committee member?
Thank you. So this will move to the council meeting next week.
September 3rd.
September 3rd, first of the month, okay? Thank you. Next item, please, G2.
Item G2, resolution authorizing a one-year month-to-month lease agreement with Forsyth County for office space for the community entry system.
We'll give the audience a little time to.
Thank you.
Regret.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, Mayor Joins, and City Council. The item you have before you is a resolution approving a month-to-month lease agreement up to one year with Forsyth County to rent office space at the Highland Avenue location for the operation of the coordinated entry system for those experiencing homelessness. The coordinated entry system will start September 1st and will offer in-person triage services to those who are experiencing homelessness in person. This is part of the revamp of the continuum of care. We had a few assessments done, and one of those assessments talked about accessibility and the need for in-person services when people are in crisis. So this is the start of those services.
And I know that Councilmember Monday and all of us have concerns about the actual process in the systems right now when it comes to housing our homeless or providing the resources that they need, or even the agencies that we are partnered with. And I would like to say that we've been asking and saying that, this is not to you personally, this is just business. We have been asking those questions, I know Councilmember Clark, for probably the past five to 10 years. We just want to see a better process. And if that means that we, and I know we had the consultants that come in, and they did their thing, but we need to now probably go benchmark some other cities or counties that are doing this better than we are doing it, and that gives us something to build on. I know that it's now August, we've had extreme temperature and weather. They're also predicting that starting in October and November, that our winter and fall may not look like what we've been used to. So I would hope that somehow or another, Mr. Payne, that you and staff get with those partners, if we can have some kind of clarity or assurance or something as to what is going to happen with this process and knowing that right now there are agencies that are in trouble, know they're being challenged with their ability to be able to sustain themselves. And I think we need to understand what kind of impact that's going to make on the council to have to make decisions, because our public is going to want to know. Any comment?
I agree. It's a very difficult issue. I will tell you, my counterparts across the state and other places are struggling just as we are with this issue. I do not think anybody has come up with a magic bullet that resolves this problem. We do have a very changing demographic in this community, as many places do, and so we are seeing some challenges, as you mentioned, in some of our nonprofit partners and other folks. This grant is really just to provide a office space, because the county does its intergovernmental grant for us to have space in the social services area to try to help with coordinate services. So I would encourage council to move forward with this one. I do hear your concerns, and we do know that homelessness is an issue that we need to spend some time on trying to address.
Thank you. Councilmember Sipio.
I'm certainly in favor of this, but I do have a question. The homeless issue is not just City Winston-Salem property, it's the entire county. Is DSS one of our partners in our continuum of care services?
They are a partner, not financially, but they are a partner.
Did we, perchance, ask them to donate office space as opposed to us having to rent it?
We submitted an application, and myself and Chantel McLaren, we met with Forsyth County DSS, and we were told to submit an application for the coordinated entry services and any other services that we request in assistance with. We submitted an application, but that application was not approved. So that's when we moved to Plan B of how do we still move forward with these services?
So I just believe we, as a council, are going to have to work a little more diligently with our commissioners, because there are so many needs in this city, and we're the largest municipality in Forsyth County, and we need them to help us serve all of the residents, or it's going to get to the point, we can't handle it. But we really need to start working together collaboratively to find, to reduce our costs, because all of the homelessness in the city are county residents also. So we need to start understanding, we've got to work together to resolve these issues. And this is a little issue. If they've got the space, they should be able to let us use it. If we had the space, we should be able to let them use it. We do collaborations, but we have to stop looking at those who have less than the rest of us, that they have to tolerate even less from us. So it's all about how we look at our residents and our heart, and I, I'm going to work with our commissioners and the county staff, see if we can be more collaborative. We've got to show that in this county and in this city. Thank you.
Councilmember Monday.
Reiterating what Councilmember Sipio said, this is something that's going to take a village. It's not our initiative. The city is not, at this point in time, the way the COC is structured, it's not our initiative to fix. It is a group issue, it's a group problem. I know in the past, the, we had a manager kind of who sat at the middle of this, who worked through United Way. It's my understanding that that person has left the United Way, I don't know if that position has been replaced, but right now, we're floundering, not as the city, as a community. So I'm calling on United Way, I'm calling on the county commissioners, I'm calling on City Without Borders, I'm calling for everyone who has a concern about this community to come together and fix this problem. It's bigger than this group is, but it's not too big for us to attack as a whole.
I agree. When COVID hit, the mayor can attest, at that point then, if the county and the city leaderships were meeting, it was just a small group. But once COVID hit, and it was affecting everybody in the county, the city and the county and other entities collaborated that we would meet. We met every Wednesday, 11 o'clock. And those meetings still happen to this day, that we began to talk about our part in how we ensure our county and cities are safe and given the resources everyone needs to survive and get through this. There was not just health talk, it was small business talk, medical center talk, education talk, it was all of the above. And if you've seen the list, it had to be at least 50 to 60 of us, that that list still stands, and I am hoping that the new county manager, the city manager moves forward, that we now use that also as a platform to discuss collaboration on other issues as well. We collaborated on eviction diversion, as to where the house, the resources and the help. You know, we collaborated during COVID on a lot of things. I just think, like, we as humans, we got away from. I just think, like, we as humans, we got away from that, now that we are kind of out of it, but I think we can bring that back as a source of hopefully working together to get some answers to try to make this incident better. I have a motion on the floor. Have we voted? Did we give a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, I have a second, and from Councilwoman Monday, first by Councilmember Cipio. Can we vote?
It just
You're not here. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Last agenda item, City Clerk, G3.
Item G3, update on community agencies' application process.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. What we have before you is an information item on the community agencies' process, specifically the locally funded part of the community agencies' process. So I'm going to walk through these slides. Three things that we're going to talk about today. One, just generally, some changes that have happened over the last couple of years and what we intend to do for what will be the fiscal year '26. A little early to start thinking '26, but that process will kick off this year for funding for '26. To get feedback and any questions that the mayor and City Council have respective to this process, and then also to remind you, as you will see, this is something else that will come up as part of your strategic planning session in January. I'm going to try and advance these slides. Jamie, do I have to ask you to do it? I clicked it, and it is not clicking forward. Can you advance it for me? Okay. So just quickly to note, when we talk about the community agencies' process and when you see it during budget, we really think about this in terms of two different funding sources. There are local funding sources, which come from our general fund, our occupancy tax fund, which is the hotel motel tax, and then also from our Housing Finance Assistance Fund. On the intergovernmental side, we have federal and state funding that our Neighborhood Services Department uses, and that comes from a variety of sources through HUD, but you have heard of and see the Community Development Block Grant funding, Home Investment Partnership funding, ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant, as well as HOPA. And so, again, we're going to talk very specifically about the local component of this. Sorry. Quick notes on process changes that have happened. Prior to 2016, those of you may remember that we had various departments accepting applications, and we consolidated those applications into one application in 2016, and budget staff took on several of the community agencies that were in different departments, the administration of those grants. The idea behind that was trying to get one application, people would know when to apply, where to apply, and that we would eliminate some of the confusion. But what I will tell you on a couple of different slides is, we eliminated some of the confusion, and we created a little bit of headache by significantly increasing the size of the application because we merged the federal and local application processes together. So, next slide. I also want to know, I want you to know, there is a memo attached to this. About a year and a half ago, I believe, we suspended the Community Agency Allocation Committee. They were meeting, but they were not meeting quorum requirements, and we felt it was necessary to make sure that they were getting a quorum and that the City Council wanted their feedback from that. So we will talk again in January about the Community Agency Allocation Commission, whether it's something that the City Council wants to continue to convene going forward, but for the fiscal year '26 process, it is not something that we intend to have. Staff review will still take place of all of the community agency applications that are put forward, and we will have some type of scoring matrix that we are currently working on, and I will show you some of the draft ideas behind that here at the end of this presentation. Next slide, please. So in terms of starting with recommendations, we are going to recommend splitting apart the applications for the federal funding and the local funding. We're going to keep the same timeframe so that they happen at the same time, so that there's not one happening in October and one in January. They will happen at the exact same time with the same timeframe, and folks will be able to get ahold of city staff and ask questions. Essentially, what you have at this point is smaller organizations that are having to fill out a very cumbersome application, and there are components of the applications that are specific to federal requirements. So they are still having to fill out the federal side of that when they want federal money, they still have to know. So we're going to try and make it a little shorter and a little easier for some of the locally funded folks. The federal or state funded ones that we talked about, Neighborhood Services Department will still handle that process, they have a good handle on it, and it will, again, be in the same timeframe. We'll also note down there at the bottom, as a reminder to City Council, all of the occupancy tax funded agencies actually moved to multi-year agreements a year ago, and so they are on five-year agreements. They still do all of the reporting that everyone else does on a quarterly basis, they simply aren't subject to the application because all of those agencies have been funded for more than a decade and a half, and we just didn't see it necessary to continue to have them put forward applications every year.
But what happens if you get a new one? Or are they others put in, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the same ones will always be there if other newer agencies or organizations come on board, right? And they have to go through the process, I know, but I'm just saying, what you just said made it sound like they're the top 10, and these are the top 10, and they'll always be the top 10.
This is an idea that we have brought to City Council before. Former Assistant City Manager Patrice Tony and I did a presentation on this, and we will be bringing back some of these ideas to you in January to talk about community agency funding and maybe how to score them going forward as it relates to your new strategic priorities that you will set.
Thank you.
This one is twofold. One, for the public to know, these are the agencies, when we talk about locally funded, this is the list of them. I want to draw your attention, and my vision is very bad, I'm going to have to stare down at my iPad, but the number 923,000 down at the bottom is the amount minus the occupancy tax fund. So that is what we're going to talk about on the next page. If Jamie, if you'll. So we have, the Arts Council gets currently $217,360. We do not, through the community agencies' process, accept public arts 501(c)(3) requests. The Arts Council grants that funding out, and we fully believe the Arts Council does a very good job with that. We do have one 501(c)(3) that falls into what we consider an innovation and small business category, but as you can see, nearly three quarters of the funding that we are currently providing to locally funded community agencies kind of fall into this education, health, and human services category. You can see the amounts there, again, in the box for fiscal year '25. We have not changed those amounts in several years, so what we are recommending, at least as a starting point, as you see at the bottom of this slide, is to set aside $3.75 per capita each year. That will grow the community agencies' pot just a little bit every year going forward, and again, we can have additional conversation in January about if you want additional resources for specific programs, outcomes, or agency types. Next slide. Kind of touched on this. The Arts Council, again, kind of has their own internal process for re-granting funds to individual artists. We don't get involved in that. In the past, we have not had a significant number of applications from what we would consider innovation and small business entities, but as those come in, we've actually had some conversations with our Office of Business Inclusion and Advancement, and we're going to allow them to do the application reviews. They are the subject matter experts in that area, and so when we get those, we will have a separate process for evaluating the ones that are related to small business and innovation. Next slide. So again, this is where about 75% of the local funding falls. As you can see here, there are a lot of different outcomes that we are putting forward related to mentoring, student achievement, financial assistance, the SOAR program, court diversions, all kinds of things. And so when we think about how, again, Mayor Protem, that money is allocated, this is one of the things that's going to have to come back to you. We are going to put together a staff scoring of these that will give you a matrix of how they would be funded, but it is very difficult for staff to say that one of these priorities is more important than the other without you opining specifically on what your strategic priorities are. Next slide. This is, again, just for the public. You will be looking at strategic priorities and strategic planning in January. These are the current tiers, one, two, and three. I would note that the vast majority of what you have in tier one is really related to economic development and related to housing. Those tend to be some of the larger areas. So as we have done staff scoring in the past, and we have used the current strategic plan, these are the priorities that we have had and based it on. But again, those will potentially change in January as you set new priorities. Next slide. In terms of a staff scoring, these are the categories in which we would be scoring and providing information back to you for those agencies. Again, they will have to provide a robust project description of what they intend to do, whether they have experience or onboarding or collaborating for experience in the program that they are intending to put forward, how that aligns to the strategic priorities of the mayor and City Council, those program goals and key objectives, what they are going to do, how they are going to do it, and how we are going to measure whether or not they have been successful, and then ultimately, a cost factor is what is the cost per participant as it relates to those programs. So we will put forward a staff scoring of these, and again, it can be difficult at times to score someone who is doing a social services factor against someone who is providing some other type of health-related service, or a mentoring service, or, you know, someone who's doing something innovative in education and childcare. We will do our best to get an apples to some kind of apple scoring for you, but again, it can be difficult at times for staff to select one over the other. Yep, next slide. So conclusions, kind of restating, again, we're going to break apart the federal and local processes. The applications will happen at the same time, the local one will be significantly shorter and easier for current, or current and future applicants. There will continue to be a staff review of all of these applications. Total funding amounts for local funding will grow based on that 375 per capita model that we will show you as part of the FY '26 budget. And again, a note there, the occupancy tax funded agencies grow based on occupancy tax receipts, which in some years have been higher than per capita growth, but in years like this year, it was actually a 0% growth. And then the last bullet point there, scoring and funding recommendations to be incorporated in '26. The note that we have there at the bottom, and again, Mayor Protem, this will come back to, do you want to use what we currently have potentially as a base and expand from that, or do you want to look at rescoring and reallocating resources, which would mean potentially defunding current agencies? That is
We got to stick where we are right now until we can get something, like you said, that we all can agree on. I would hate for us to upset organizations that are already doing the work, you know. Again, we got to land somewhere, but it's better to just stay where we are and work to make it better, just like with the COC and housing and the model thing.
Very good. Next slide. General process and timeline. So applications for funding prior to last year were due in the fall. They were due in January last year. We are going to continue that forward, so whether it be the federal process or the local process, the month of January is when applications will open. We'll have an application due date at the end of January, which gives organizations roughly four weeks to fill out the application and submit the necessary materials, with a staff review taking place over the next couple of months, and us coming during the budget process to have those more formal discussions with the City Council about appropriations for those agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Tesh. I really like the bullet point three on your conclusions about make the funding request amounts tied to population growth. Over the years, we've always, the occupancy tax, it's like it runs itself, you know, if conventions are coming, weddings, whatever, coming, sleeping in hotels, eating in restaurants, that has always been able to sustain and build. But when it comes to providing local funding or requests for nonprofits and agencies that do a lot of the groundwork that we don't do, we do policy, that I'm fine with it being tied with the population growth because it is, City Manager, our city is changing, and people are coming here, whether we want them here or not, and we got to be ready to be able to answer the call that if we are not going to do this, and we have agencies competing, and I hear this in my conversations with all of these nonprofits now that are doing the work on trauma and emotional social development, mental illness, and poverty, and all of that, that they are all like competing with each other for these pennies, and I would hope in the future that we, again, collaborate better with our philanthropic leaders and leaders and people in our community who have more to give than most. I am hoping, again, even our big nonprofits. I'm hoping, and I've said this before, that everybody needs to put something into play. As Councilmember Cipio said, if we're going to do Forsyth, with Winston being a part of Forsyth, then all of us need to contribute to make that happen. So I think we're on a good path right now, and I like it. Any questions or comments from the committee? Councilmember Cipio, Councilmember Monday, City Manager? No? You got anything? He has something? Okay.
Mr. Tesh, I hats off to your group for trying to tackle this. Having run a nonprofit, I think our city process is antiquated, it's hard, it shows favoritism, it's not right for groups who don't have staff, it's not good for them. So I don't think it works for those who are doing the work. I would hope that we, you would talk to nonprofit managers to get their input on what process would work for them. Because I remember years ago, when it went to that long form, that was the craziest thing, for people who are trying to serve the public, either in the arts or social services, to have to deal with that. It's cumbersome. And I think that we need to be open to a simpler process, and I am not in favor of keeping people on the funding just because they've always been there without having justification to receive those funds. How impactful have they been? How successful are they? Who else funds them? So the bigger agencies get the money. Small nonprofits that's doing really hard work have struggled to get any of our support. We've had agencies that work only with the kids in Roland Hills and Piedmont Circle and Cleveland Avenue Homes. They couldn't get any of our money, but they're doing the hard work with the kids that nobody else wants to work with. I think we need to look differently on how we allocate our funds and to who gets it. So I challenge you to do that. Make it simpler and figure out how we can serve those who are not in the mainstream of knowing how to go and get the money, because they only have volunteers usually, and they don't have a development officer. They shouldn't be penalized for the work they do. So I just challenge you to reach out to those agencies and ask them how it would work for them, not for the benefit of our staff, what's easiest for the staff to do, but what's the best way to serve those in the community that we are seeking to serve.
And Councilmember Cipio, just as I was saying, I think a lot of people would be amazed at how many nonprofit groups that actually do the work, as we call it. Right now, they are working together, they meet, I'm on two or three of the advisory boards, and it's serious. I mean, it's not like years ago that you couldn't see any end game to it all, but we are seeing the fruit of the work right now in Winston-Salem with all of these organizations working together. When you got Kate B. and Winston-Salem Foundation and all of them now at the table with me and others, figuring out how we begin to make a shift, a paradigm shift in Winston-Salem so far as poverty is concerned. I agree with you, and I've told these groups, Mr. Tesh and Mr. Payne, that we need to find a way or go ahead and create a platform, a mechanism, for them to give us feedback, because I have heard that time and time again over the past year and a half of these groups, that they don't feel like that they have any input into any of our processes when it comes to things that involve their agencies or their nonprofits. So if we could figure out whether, Mr. Payne, Mr. Tesh, whether we have community meeting, like we do listening state meetings all over the city, if we could pick two areas, recreation centers, different parts of town, and get the word out to these agencies and all of these people that are on these lists to come and give us their feedback, I think that would be a great thing. Councilwoman Monday.
I would agree with Councilmember Cipio that we make it hard. When I can figure out the IRS instructions faster than I can the city instructions, we've got a problem. got a problem. And I've asked us to address, not the council, but I've asked city manager previously and currently to consistently look at how we communicate with our citizens, and that includes organizations like this. However, in the past, they're two basic pots of money for a nonprofit, is organizational funding and project funding. Organization allows them to pay for salaries and fix the roof and buy toilet paper. Projects have to be spent towards a specific project, and they are earmarked funds. I thought that what we had provided was always operational funds, but then I saw on one of the slides a description of the project. So are we actually changing the focus or rather the nature of the funding that we're providing?
There is no intent here to change the nature of the funding. For a majority of the local ones, generally, the application and then the subsequent contract provides general administrative support. We do not ask them for specific receipts. The ones that are federally funded are a completely different process in what is required with program outcomes and financial backup and those types of things. But for the vast majority of what are the locally funded ones, yes, they are more just for general operations, Collidium being an example. We don't have specific programs that we tie that funding to, it is tied to their general operations. So long as they have $200,000 worth of annual expenses to tie back to it, then they have met their requirements, as long as they do the reporting as well.
That's good. It's the hardest thing for nonprofits to find is operation funding. And I think we could still have some kind of a year-end review, or each group sets up objectives that they feel like our funding will help them achieve, so that we have a year-end accounting and we can feel like we are very much being good stewards of the money that we're putting into nonprofits. I don't know that that's always existed, and certainly not in a way that I remember being presented to us. So that's an accountability issue. And then the last thing I just wanted to say is, as you said, you're not an expert at this, and you're not supposed to be. But if you could bring in some of the funders who do look at this, they do know how to assess, and they do know what the key points are to work with you, to develop those things that are lacking, I think we would benefit from having their input as well.
I will say just a few things generally. The intent of this process is to make it easier. We have had discussions and quite frankly, do get calls from some of these nonprofits on a regular basis and have made amendments to our process. One of them was the financial audit requirement, which we looked at some of our peers and have moved away from that. Smaller organizations have different options when they fall below the $50,000 threshold in terms of financial reporting that's required to us. Currently, a local application is somewhere between 15 and 25 pages. Our intent is to shorten that into the five to six range. So we are talking about making this significantly easier for some of those organizations. With respect to kind of the subject matter expert, that goes back to any nonprofit anywhere in the city who does anything can submit an application. And so it is very difficult. We can provide the year-end. Each nonprofit is required to report quarterly on their outcomes. Many of them tend to be workload-related rather than outcome-related, but it is very difficult to quantify the difference between a service provided at a healthcare facility versus a childcare service, and what is one person served there and $1 spent there versus another. So we do have access to that information, we do report that and can bring it back to the city council. It just becomes very difficult to show you a complete comparison of two people who are providing completely different services.
And I'm not suggesting that that be a standard. As a matter of fact, I would say quite the opposite, that those objectives would probably be different for each group. But setting them up at the beginning of the year as part of receiving that money, I think is what we would want to measure at the end of the year. And as far as bringing in subject matter experts, I meant that where you assess the existing nonprofits and all the checkmarks and so forth, that they may be able to help you in that process as opposed to creating the forum. But I know that most of our nonprofits are more than happy to help because they realize that any money coming from anywhere else will benefit them in the long run.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just real quickly, we appreciate the comments that are being made. And as Scott mentioned, the whole purpose of this is to make it easier for the nonprofits and easier for council to review. So the length of the applications tends to get longer when council asks for more information. So just be mindful of what you're asking the nonprofits to do, because the more information you want from us, the more we've got to ask for the nonprofits. The second part that Scott has been trying to allude to is that there's only a certain pot of money that's out there. So the only thing worse than having to fill out a long application is filling out a long application which you have no chance of actually getting funds for. So a big part of what we're going to ask you to do is look at prioritization. And he said that multiple times. We need to know what kind of nonprofits you want to fund, and therefore, we can provide better information to those nonprofits. So the ones that have a chance to be successful can put in the time and effort, and the ones that are doing good things in the community but are not priorities of council and what you want to move forward for, we can let them know that that's probably where council's going to be. Not that they can't fill them out, but don't spend a lot of time on it because you're doing something that we believe is a human service function that the county should be funding, as an example. But our whole purpose of this is to make it easier for the nonprofits. But funding is going to be a key part of that and council priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Tej.
Thank you.
Community Development is now adjourned and Housing is...
Thank you. Mayor Protem, I'd like to now pass the gavel.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Yeah, does anybody want to take a quick five-minute break?
Yeah.
We'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at 3:20.
I guess I'll call committee of the whole back to order, please. All right, we got more water? We can get the rest of our council members in.
We will every now and then we grow that mouse. We've been going time out enough. We're supposed to confuse that.
All right, we're now in business. Council members will now move to the public works committee and chairman McIntosh will take that. Before we go forward, let me just clarify, and it's probably my fault, this is the committee of the whole, and the committee of the whole as everybody voted on the consent agenda. So I think going forward for the public works committee and the finance committee, the entire committee of the whole may vote on these. Council member Adams, Mayor Protem Adams, I don't think there are any items on yours that were close vote by any kind, but if any member sees an item on the minutes of this meeting and want to clarify your vote, or they can do that, but going forward, any member of the committee of the whole may vote on that. Chairman McIntosh, you want to gavel just in case?
Nah, it's okay. I'll holler if I need it. If anybody gets out of order, I'll just switch over. All right, we had no items on the consent agenda from the public works committee that were polled, so we'll jump right into item G four.
Item G four, resolution authorizing an agreement for engineering, design, and coordination services for phase two of the long branch trail.
All right, if we can get a presentation on G four, please.
Thank you, Chairman McIntosh, Mayor Jones, Mayor Protem Adams, members of the committee of the whole. Jeff Fensler, I'm the director of transportation for the city of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to present this item before you this afternoon. Really, what's up for discussion and up for this item today is to award a resolution authorizing an agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates for phase two design contract for the long branch trail extension. I do mention phase two because this would extend the current long branch trail north of Martin Luther King. So what I thought I'd do is kind of just highlight real in two or three minutes just just what the project is and the boundaries so forth, and then we'll move into the item. As I mentioned, this project does extend the long branch trail current, which was just terminated, north Martin Luther King drive. It extends it north to East 25th Street indicated by the graphic shown there. There were some primary funding sources that I'll highlight because many of the ones in this room celebrated with us back in 2022 when USDOT welcomed the award of the RAGE grant that our staff did submit, and we were successful in that award. So we'll highlight that $6 million grant that USDOT did grant our city for this project. It was further supplemented by our local NPO funds to help with the design, which is really what we're up for discuss today through our STBGDA program, which was run through, federal dollars run through our NPO. And then, of course, both of those programs do have matching requirements, and we've worked with the budget staff to make sure we've properly appropriated those matching funds. So I'll remind us all back in 2019, several years ago, this project really was conceived of the feasibility study. And so we partnered with HGR to develop this concept. As I mentioned, this is a partnering with our transit oriented development initiative as well, but it essentially conceived this project along the corridor and the feasibility of it, which was, of course, in favor and strong enough, of course, to be funded by USDOT. So just highlighting there the existing trail, I wanted to highlight this because one of the main things that we're trying to remind staff, to really remind our consultants that we're ultimately going to recommend award, but want to remind us here today that we're going to, this is an extension. This is not an independent trail. The fit and finish that you see south of, north of Martin Luther King, we expect it to be the same fit and finish as it marches forward and north. We want that trail to look like it does south. And so right here is where we all gathered and celebrated that award. You see some of the 14 foot wide, you see the landscaping, the lighting, all those accommodations will certainly be a part of the trail extension as we move forward. So looking at the southern limit of the new project phase two, which is the northern limit of the current trail, Martin Luther King, that project will cross at grade North Martin Luther King Junior Drive, there kind of shown indicated by the red arrow, it will pass directly forward there, headed north. And so one of the major challenging elements of this project will be to figure out this at grade crossing to make sure we provide that safe accommodation. This is where the southern limit of the project exists. About halfway through the corridor, and I will mention this is a 1.2 mile segment of the trail, this is about halfway along that corridor, there is a grade separated crossing where the trail will actually bridge over Northwest Boulevard. So pictured here is existing railroad bridge that will be supplemented by the pedestrian bridge. One of the key features here is that we have scoped this project to first see what possibilities we could use the existing bridge abutments to support that span, not have to demo any of this, and really some cost saving initiatives. It'll be more expensive upfront, that's why you see some of the heavier design elements, to really analyze this for its feasibility, but in the long term, substantial cost savings if we can utilize the existing bridge abutments there to supplement, and it's consistent with how the southern segments of the project were constructed. So we'll tie in that element should the engineering assessment come back in our favor. And then at the northern limit, this is looking south at East 25th Street, you can kind of see highlighted there, this is where the trail will terminate, but you kind of see the rail corridor there that will house this future pedestrian path. And so again, North Martin Luther King Junior Drive, north to East 25th Street, and from there, the project has some challenges, which is why we chose to terminate there. We have to integrate with Norfolk Southern Rail. I will call your attention that the rail line pictured here is not Norfolk Southern, but is an NC DOT inactive rail segment. So our partnership there is a lot more challenging as we go farther north where we do have to integrate with Norfolk Southern. So all that to say, before you to consider today is a design contract to award this contract to Kimley Horn and Associates to just over $1 million. And so staff went through a qualifications based proposal solicitation. We worked with our purchasing department to advertise this scope, and it came back with Kimley Horn being the highest scoring firm. They were the only scoring firm after even an extension of the timeline requesting proposals. We wanted to make sure we gave enough diligence, but give them the tight timeline, give them the complexity and availability, which is a key component. I want to highlight that the availability of key personnel was a key component to make sure we can deliver this project on time, because with the RAGE grant award, there is some critical milestones we must hit, with the biggest one being the rail agreement in December. And I'm happy to report that we are well on our way to hit that benchmark and keep the project on track. So all that to be, all that said, we're excited about the project. It is funded through the funding sources that I mentioned previously, and I'll stop there, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Committee members, council, questions? Councilor Larson.
Thank you for this briefing. A question about land ownership, you said the state owns the railroad currently?
Councilwoman Larson, this is a state owned rail corridor, that's correct.
We will be building a pathway on state owned property?
That's correct, and hence the agreement we must have with NC Rail to authorize that.
And is, within the scope of work for the engineers, what is the role of the railroad actually in this scope of work?
The role of the railroad is to, one, review the plan, and, two, provide us an encroachment authority so we can occupy the space. That's the milestone that's due in December, we're actively pursuing with that rail agreement. So we have to get their authority for us to occupy their space through that encroachment agreement.
Do we know what the long term plans are for the railroad and state?
I do not know, but what we do know is that just past 25th Street, the line does terminate, it has no other connections, and so it would take a tremendous amount of infrastructure improvements for this ever to become back to a rail corridor. But as I mentioned in the previous slide, maybe I can go back to it, this was part of our transit oriented development study, and so we do have some high level analyses around what this could look like as some type of passenger rail corridor, but again, subject to further really investigation feasibility and really community interest, but potentially for bringing something on the back further, you know, pending further study.
Is there any involvement in long term with railroad on this piece of property that is not currently there?
It is for this project. Now, if we ever want to pursue anything further, it would have to be, the agreement would have to be amended, because it would essentially allocate the existing rail. One of the conditions of the agreement would be we can't touch the rail infrastructure that's there today, we have to stay 15 foot off of the center line of that rail. And so if we choose to do something else, it would take an amended agreement, and we have to go back to the drawing board and negotiate with NC Rail.
Are there millions of dollars allocated to this project now that this is kind of construction ready, and there's no work to be done on the railroad line?
With this project, there is nothing to be done with the rail line, other than coordination.
We got some grant funding several years ago to look at light rail up in that area. Chairman.
Yeah, we did look at the possibility of putting a streetcar network in here, and we thought maybe we could afford it because the infrastructure we thought was pretty much there, but when we got the numbers back, it was astronomical. We backed away from that.
The reason I'm asking this is that the plan that you're showing, it shows various station stops and connections to the railway, to the railroad line as part of the plan.
One of the things I want to highlight with this slide was just to show that we went out to feasibility study and really assessed this, not to preclude the possibility of future passenger rail, not so much that this project will accommodate passenger rail, but want to highlight that this is a supplement to what we could do, but not to take its place.
Other questions?
Just a comment.
Okay, Councilor Sibio.
Couple of years ago, I was chatting with my DOT people, not you guys, but the state, and I had the opportunity, they actually took me on a ride along the rails to, along this walking trail. So I think that if any council members are like that, I'd love for you to take that ride, because you can see just where it would go, but also just how picturesque just walking along that rail line would be between those old buildings that were warehouses and the beautiful trees. So I think this is going to be a really, really beautiful place to walk when it's done. And the ride up there on the truck on the tracks was very interesting, too.
I remember when I first got on council, some national publication criticized us for the lack of connectivity and walking and greenway spaces that we had, and the strides that we have made since I've been on council have been remarkable. And this project just continues to stretch the boundaries of where downtown goes, and the inclusivity of what downtown now touches is just, I think, remarkable, and this really does sort of push who gets to be in downtown, who gets to participate in downtown, is really important. The amount of work that went into this from staff, council, and mayor, I think is really remarkable. The timelines on it were, as you said, very short, and so I really appreciate transportation's efforts on this and all staff, so thank you very much for this.
Mr. Chair, one quick question for you.
Sure.
Jeff, you talk faster than I listen, so if you said this, I apologize.
I apologize.
Along the way, are there spaces for people to park a car, like there are closer to the main entrance, I guess, of the trail downtown? And is that included in the scope of work?
So vehicular parking is not included in this scope. There will be amenities such as bicycle parking and things of that nature for alternate modes, but this is largely a controlled corridor that doesn't have the same access opportunities as it does south. So those access points will be limited, but I will say this, because along with this analysis, we are providing other accommodations to some of the side streets that do connect this. So there will be opportunity throughout the corridor where there will be a spur connection to existing city owned right of way to allow access along the corridor. So while it may not be vehicular, we'll be providing a number of access points throughout the corridor, so you don't have to only access from downtown.
Thank you.
Okay, G five, please. I'm sorry, is this a vote? All right, let's vote.
Avoiding the contract.
Can I get a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, there we go. And let's vote. Everybody, just a vote. Thank you. Everybody. All right, now.
Item G five, consideration of items relating to the Federal Transit Administration's Low or No Emission Grant Program Award to the city of Winston-Salem for the purchase of five hybrid electric buses.
All right, Mr. Fensler, while you're at it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, members of Mayor Jones, Mayor Protem Adams, members of the committee. So I am certainly happy to remind us all back in March of this year, we did bring an item before committee and council to issue a letter of support for staff to pursue the FTA's Low No Emission Program, the grant opportunity that they advertised. And I'm happy to say that through the incredible grant writing skills by staff, namely Hunter Stajak on our team, who did a tremendous job telling our story, where our fleet has been and where we're going, to really highlight what we need, and I think that story was compelling to allow USDOT and FTA to award us $4.4 million to pursue five new 35 foot hybrid electric vehicles. And so I'm happy to report that from there, and I'll pause, because these vehicle replacements are certainly replacing five of our fleet that have exceeded their useful life, 500,000 miles or 12 years. And so from there, what this item would do was authorize a purchase order with a partnering agency, New Flyer, they are the vendor that we will select to use to move forward with this procurement. And one of the creative things about this program by USDOT is it allows that partnership letter, and it really satisfies all their procurement requirements and strengthened our application at the same time, because we went out and engaged a number of, and there's not a lot of players in this space that can meet the specifications that our fleet needs, and we were engaged both Gillick and New Flyer to give us their, basically their best quote to meet all of our specifications that could be considered by FTA to allow this to be awarded. And we're happy to present that New Flyer was the selective vendor to meeting all those qualifications and giving us the quickest timeline of delivery. So we're happy to also, I mean, right now, sometimes we're at 16, 18, even 20 months. They've committed to 12 to 16 months, and we're hopeful that we can do as much as we can to get that to the closer to the 12 month mark, to get these buses in our fleet. One of the other components I want to highlight, because it's a key critical part of this, is the USDOT's requirement for workforce development as part of the grant application. And so $64,000 of this program will be allocated toward workforce development as relationship to the procurement of these buses. So that's a component of the grant award, and certainly we're committed to that as well as New Flyer through their partnership engagement with the city in this initiative. So happy to report that this Low No Program, we were successful in our application, and that this item would consider the purchase of five of those New Flyer buses to meet our aging fleet needs. Happy to take any questions.
Yes, are these the same buses we currently have?
They are, they are same size, of course, there's some technology benefits that are going to bring us a little bit ahead, yeah, so they are technology more advanced.
Yeah, but same.
It's the same size, same comparable, yes.
Councilor Mundy.
Are any of our existing fleet still powered 100% by gasoline? Or diesel, I'm sorry, muscle fuel?
Diesel, electric, I think all of our, Hunter may know, are they all?
Yeah, so this replacement is also all diesel electric, but the status of all of the current vehicles in the system are diesel electric hybrid buses.
So I'm not sure I'm understanding, the five that will be retiring, are they also hybrid or?
Yes.
Okay, so it's hybrid for hybrid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, can you get a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Send motion in second. Does everybody vote? All right, unanimous. We'll move to our last item, G six. Yes.
Yes, I'd like to say that councilmember Clark, myself, Larson, the mayor, we see these items come to the Transportation Advisory Committee. So whenever Winston-Salem is able to get this type of acknowledgement from the federal government, our state, and again to Mr. Fensler and Hunter and the wonderful staff we have in DOT, I can tell you now that a lot of cities want our staff to leave Winston and go somewhere else, because they are head and shoulders above their peers, and they're very well respected when they come forward to describe all of the complicated language of DOT to the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we appreciate it.
I think Hunter needs to stand up.
Yay!
Thank you, thank you. All right, G six.
Item G six, 2024 update on Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities.
Courtney, take us home.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. So I can't advance, right? You're going to have to advance. Oh, it's working for me.
You're in charge.
Girl power. I've got the special touch, I guess, I don't know. So today, in my update, I'm going to focus on three topics that were mentioned during a budget meeting, so I want to take this opportunity just to circle back and respond to those questions that were asked. The three topics are, you have an update on the southeast Forsyth County sewer expansion project, regulatory updates, which I'll focus on a few, because we have many, and then do an update on the landfill capacity projections. So first, our southeast Forsyth County sewer expansion. Forsyth County received $20 million from the state budget to expand water and/or wastewater service in southeastern Forsyth County. So I've been working with Forsyth County officials, both staff and elected officials, to determine the best use of those funds, and it has, we have identified a site on Walburg Road across from Union Cross Business Park to put, build a new sanitary sewer lift station that would expand sewer service in that area. Currently, we have a request for qualifications that's being advertised for an owner advisory, advisor services. We feel like this project is an ideal project to have a design build, project delivery. So first piece of that will be to hire an owner advisor that helps us write that RFP, make sure all of our legal requirements are correct, and make sure we build a good contract for that type of project delivery. I have two maps in here, really the same, but just a little different way to look at it. But right here's, you can see south of Interstate 74, off Walburg Road, and I'm not sure if this pointer works, probably not, but let me go to the next slide, because I think you might be able to see it a little bit better. But anyway, off Walburg Road to the east or to the right is where we're looking to build a new lift station. The hatched area would be the area that we would serve, it's around 443 acres. Any questions on that? Yes.
The blue lines are gravity fed lines to the lift station, the purple line is?
Is the forced main that would tie it into the existing infrastructure, yes.
Does the $20 million project include those pipes?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Courtney, I'm just glad to see this. I mean, we've been kind of reticent to do these lift stations over the drain line there, but we're running out of space for business parks in the community, and for us to grow, we've got to have these, particularly up in the northeastern part of the community where the beltway's going through, there's a lot of opportunities there, so I'm glad to see us moving in this direction.
Yes, you're absolutely right. We're running out of, we need to expand our services to be able to build out, so absolutely. Okay, so switching to regulatory updates, I'll focus on the water side first. In April of this year, EPA announced the maximum contaminant levels for six PFOS compounds. So as you know, PFOS is found in many products, so non-sick cookware, cleaning products, stain resistant coatings on upholstery and carpet and personal items, it's just, it's found everywhere. So the EPA is now regulating those. You can see the levels for PFOA and PFOS. There's health hazard index for these other compounds. I'm not going to get into the particulars about all that, because that gets really technical, but the good news is that our source water for our water, drinking water plants, we meet these levels, we're below these levels, so we don't anticipate that we're going to have to do any major treatment changes or updates to be able to meet the new requirements. So that's the good news. Second piece, so lead and copper rule revisions and improvements. The lead and copper rule was really established in 1991. There's been some revisions since then, but a major revision was done in 2021, which was called the lead and copper rule revisions, and then recently, currently, right now, under, still under the rule making process, is the lead and copper rule improvements. So there's still some things that haven't quite been finalized of that. But the revisions are going to be, it revises a regulatory timeline for service line replacement and new sampling requirements for utilities across the country. We have to do a lead service line inventory, which is due October of this year, and what that means is we have to have a public facing document that all of our customers will be able to see, and it's going to have the material, the pipe type for the public side and the private side. Currently, we've sampled around 400, we've done field potholing and investigation, and we've worked with our state regulators to approve a predictive model that we're going to use to determine, you know, what we think has led and what we think has galvanized lines within our system. There's also a tool that we have on our website where our customers can go and self-report, so there's an easy step-by-step process, there's some visuals on there, and we're asking for our customers to self-report what kind of service line that they have leading to their homes. Part of the piece that's still under review is the timeline for replacements. So the current improvements rule would say that utilities have 10 years to replace all lead service line and galvanized lines within their utility within 10 years, starting in 2027. So we're still, we got to figure out all the nuances with that and the policies and, you know, funding, obviously. There's some bipartisan infrastructure act funding that we are going to be applying for. It'll be an legitimate item for you pretty soon to approve the application process, but there's going to be loan forgiveness for funding that we use in areas of underserved communities and in either low interest or no interest for the funding that we use in communities outside of that. We're going to be applying for the maximum amount each cycle, it's two and a half million for any find and fix replacement, or find and fix of those service lines, and then five million max for replacement, total replacements.
That's not either replace all means public and private?
Yes, up to, up to the homes. And so again, there's some particular things that we'll need to work out, because you know, a homeowner may not want us on their property, and so we've got to work through all those policies and how exactly that works, so definitely more to come on that.
What, I ask, yeah, what would that mean then to the responsibility for repair in the future if it's, currently it stops at the property line? So if we're taking it all the way to the home, we know how that will affect us?
Yes, so we would not take on responsibility, we would just help fund or, you know, coordinate that replacement. And that's one of the things that we're talking about, you know, do we want to have the homeowners contract with a utility contractor or a plumber, you know, themselves, and then maybe there's some kind of reimbursement program in place? So we've got to figure all that, but you're right, we don't want to replace that and then be responsible for it here on out.
So it's more administering the funds to replace those?
Exactly, yes.
And one other quick question, the Gen X in your alphabet soup up here?
Yes.
Is that the demographic Gen X? I don't understand how it fits in there.
No, it's just, it's another compound, it's just a chemical compound, yeah.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, we're talking about a pipe from my meter to my house?
Yes. Well, from the public main to your house.
Okay, but it's not much distance from the public main, it's got to go through my meter and into your house.
Correct.
What do we think the average cost would be per house?
I knew you were going to ask that.
Good, because I can, let me tell you, my house, you're going to have to go under a side, under a circular drive, you're going to have to avoid the wires to the lights along the circular drive, I have at least two pipes you're going to have to avoid from the sprinkler system, and then you're going to have to go under the side of my driveway to that house to get there. It just looks like you need to be astronomical.
And there's not going to be one size fits all, I mean, it's going to be different, so I can't, that's why, I knew you were going to ask that, but I can't put a number to it, because it really, there's a lot of to it because it really, there's a lot of different variables that will determine that cost.
It depends.
Yes.
I mean, they're, they're telling us they're going to give us, what, $5 million?
Well, that's the maximum amount that we can apply for each funding cycle, and that funding cycles are every three months. So I don't know how much...
That'd be two, twenty a year, okay. I just think it's going to be astronomical.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. Are we seeing that the federal government, EPA, is mandating that we, the city, change all of our pipes and that residents change their pipes? Is that the mandate that we foresee?
So there's still a little bit that needs to be, so I mentioned earlier that the lead and copper rule improvements, it's still under the rule-making process, so we should have a better idea of what, what our regulations, what we're going to be required to do by October of this year. So currently, how it's written is that all lead service lines need to be replaced within 10 years, and that includes what's in the public right away, all the way up to the house. And so, yeah, it's for all utilities, yes.
So how do we advocate to say if you're going to make this rule, Mr. EPA, that you pay at least for us to have that?
Right. And we do have advocates and lobbyists and lawyers and all, you know, different groups that are trying to communicate, you know, what challenges we have. I'll say at the national level, AWA, which stands for American Water Works Association, is a big advocacy group that's, you know, speaking on our behalf about the challenges.
But I think at some point, our building codes changed and lead pipes were no longer being used, correct? And so we know at what point in time perhaps that's not, these houses don't have those pipes, but we do know that the older houses would probably, it may have those pipes.
Correct. So we do know based off age, whether it's probably not, we don't have a lead issue here. We have found some lead service lines in galvanized. We found more galvanized pipe in our system, but yes, our sample set is really targeted around those homes that, that fall within that age.
Mayor Johnson?
Courtney, what would you say to the citizens when they hear us talk about lead pipes? I immediately think of Flint. But what can you say that we're not in a Flint situation?
We are, we are not in a Flint situation, and we have, we're well within compliance of the lead and copper rule, and we will remain in compliance when these, you know, with the current revisions and improvements to the rules. So I would say there's, our water is safe to drink, and we're very fortunate here, so...
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay. And then I didn't mention microplastics because I know that that was mentioned during the budget, you know, workshops, but right now, there's no current proposed regulation, only a lot of industry discussion.
Congresswoman Marshall.
Because your link and copper are together in the original revisions. Copper, as far as I'm aware, is still being used in construction.
Yes.
So what do we say to your homeowner that you're not on copper?
So there are, copper is still being used, and so I know the rule has linked them together, but this really focuses on the lead, not so much the copper.
Is that copper in the house?
I say, the copper that's used now is, is fine, and so there's not an issue with, with copper, no. Okay. So switching to the wastewater side, so there's nutrient management plan. We've been working with our state regulators, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, on a nutrient management plan, and we've developed a plan where we're going to be treating phosphorus first in our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, that's what that stands for, NPDES. And then nitrogen would be in the second round. And so what that looks like for us is that our permit cycles at our wastewater plants are five years long. So we just got a new permit, and it's set to expire in 2028. So we anticipate that we're going to have phosphorus limits in 2028. We'll have 10 years to implement those, to meet those limits. And then in the next cycle, so in 2033, we anticipate that we'll have nitrogen limits, and then we'll have 10 years to implement those. So we still have some time, but I will tell you that it's very expensive, and so we're going to need to be planning for that. At the same time that we're going to need to be meeting those limits, we're also going to need to be doing capacity upgrades at both of our plants because that's been identified in the master planning process. PFOS on the wastewater side, so the focus has been on drinking water, but it will, they will shift over to the wastewater side. So we're just currently awaiting next steps from the EPA and the state on that, but I can tell you we're, we're ahead of it by sampling. We're sampling in our plants, and we're sampling all of our significant industrial users just to get data and know maybe where PFOS is coming from, where we see it, so... Now, the last topic is landfill tonnage and history and capacity. So we project remaining life at the landfill with the following areas. So we look at the three-year average tonnage. We escalate that by 0.9%, which is the population growth rate, and then we look at in-place density of the waste. We look at that every year. And this is specifically at Haynes. We assume that our construction and demolition waste will go to Haynes after OSR, so that's Old Salisbury Road landfill, which takes our CND, closes, and we anticipate that's going to close in around 2030. So we saw an increase in FY '24, but we are, we did see an overall three-year average decrease, and you can tell by the chart where we've seen an increase in tonnage and then a decrease. And so basically with that decrease, we're now projected to be at capacity at 2043. So we, we gained a year because it was at 2042. And then, as you know, we're building an MSC BURN, which stands for mechanically stabilized earthen burn. It's currently under contract, which will take about 12 to 18 months. It increases the overall capacity by 23%, and it added seven years. So that 2043 includes the construction of that wall, that burn. We also have some remaining cells that we need to build, so we're currently working in cell five. One through five have already been constructed. Cell six and seven have been permitted, but they need to be constructed, so we'll be working on that, and the remaining piece of the wall will be constructed by 2030. We're currently updating our master plan, so there, we'll be coming to you in the future with kind of next steps, so what happens after 2043. And with that, any questions?
Congresswoman Recipio.
You know, you always do such a good job in letting us know about utilities, and that's why it's such a well-run department and...
Thank you.
Also very well maintained and sustained financially. One of the things that I think is crucial that residents understand and know, and we need to remind them, that they can get permits to go to the landfill, a permit that allows them to take a load, I believe, twice a year, free of charge. I just don't know how many people know that, and I want to tell whoever is dumping on Barley Road, if you're a city resident, get your permit, take your trash to the landfill, because I'm really tired of seeing it. But I do want to say to community development and sanitation, I love the crews that come out to help keep that area clean. It is horrendous. The day they clean it, nightfall comes, it's back out there. But I wish there were a campaign that we could tell our residents, our communities kept clean by them not trashing it. And I also want to say that it's not just the east ward that's getting trashed, it's the west side. I drove down Silas Creek Parkway, and I said, oh my, they've got as much trash out here as we have.
That's right.
And so it's up to our residents to help clean up our city and keep it clean, so don't trash my streets. I'm coming after you.
All right. Questions, comments, anything else for...
Where is your earthen wall going at the landfill?
Yeah, let me, do you mind if I come up here and shake?
Yes. Do you mind?
Yes, so it's going all the way around here. So the first phase will be built about right here, and then the second phase.
So it will help the life of cell 25?
Yes, we'll be able to raise it higher, and the same thing with six and seven.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So will each one of those increase by 23%?
The landfill as a whole, the capacity as a whole will increase by 23%.
Anything else? Courtney, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You did a normal great job.
Thank you.
All right. That's it for Public Works. Thank you.
We'll pass the baton over to the finance committee, and Ms. Chairman, you've got consent item 17 and 22.
Robert, you got to follow up and come up with as much money as I did in Public Works, it was $24 million.
Okay, we're going to do it. Consent C 17, it's a clerk, but please read that one.
Item C 17, resolution rescinding the prior actions of city council approving certain economic development agreements slash projects.
I'm going to ask this before, I think as a general standard operating procedure, we should have term limits when we do certain contracts. If we do an economic development, if work hasn't started within X number of, and I would say years, then they would automatically terminate. Because if you look at the ones in here, some of them are quite old, 16, 17, 18, 2019, 2022, et cetera. Just in general, because we have a lot of things, and we've just talked about forgiving a lien on some apartments. Well, that contract should have the thing that if they don't have that thing done within two or three years, then that terminates, they got to come back. They have some type of accountability.
All new contracts have a three-year timeframe.
With that, I'll move approval. Hold this one there, second.
Second.
All in favor, and everyone gets a vote. When I'm in charge, everybody does.
Will we have a process in place to advise these folks who had the contract that it is indeed going away?
I feel sure we will.
We've had...
May I make a comment? There's no money going back into the budget because no money was promised to these unless somebody had actually completed them and paid us first.
This is just paperwork.
Yeah, cleaning up.
Except for one, which we determined based upon the source of funding, which was 2014 bond funds, the project could not be carried out as proposed. So that was $3 million set aside for that. So otherwise, yes, that's true. And so for the other ones, clearly, well, the group that has the issue, they know about the issue, but for the other ones, can't actually check with the companies to determine whether or not they were going to move forward with their projects, and basically was told that they were not going to move forward.
Everybody please vote. We have. Is it? It is approved. Thank you very much. We will now go to...
22. C 20...
Please read that one.
C 22, consideration of items related to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget ordinances.
Miss Allen, would you like to talk?
Thank you, everyone. The thing that I was questioning or wanted to know was page two, where we talked about of the car, where we talked about the home funds and it having to be a community housing development organization. Tell me how that works and what the requirements are for that.
Well, the requirements, they have to be certified through HUD. They have to meet certain requirements through HUD to be a designated CHODO. And I believe the one that we have been utilizing, Habitat, was designated years ago as, as our CHODO. Maybe at that time, they were the only local CHODO. I know it's not that case today, and so we do have to put a process in place to put that information out there to give other CHODOs opportunities.
That's basically what I wanted answered because, again, there are people that do read our agenda, and they saw that, and they called me about it and asked me, did I know that we only had one CHODO? I was like, we only got one? I kind of knew that one, but I thought that we would have more, being the situation that housing is in right now in this country. So I would ask staff that whatever we need to do with HUD or whoever to get that out there to other community development or people that are nonprofits that build housing. I had a meeting Friday, Councilman Recipio, Councilman Burke and I, with some groups. And again, people just want parity on whatever, and equity on whatever's out there to allow everybody that wants to build a house, that can build a house, that has all of the credentials, all of the capital stack, to be able to get in the game. So I would just ask you and your departments to make that an announcement quickly as possible as to where they can go to get this information or to create an application. That's all I want.
So for this year, we're already designated, right? I think this year, we're already locked in with the budget, but we will make sure that the next year that we have, we receive the funding, that we get the information out. We are required to do 15%, but if the council will allow, we can do more than 15% of our, our home funds, but the minimum is 15%. But we will make sure we've got a process in place.
Yeah, just make sure, you know, when you're talking with HUD or the people, that we understand that we can just put the information out there just like we do with, when we want the public to know something. Again, this goes back to Housing Summit. Who knows what and who doesn't? And that's what we heard a lot of, that everybody doesn't know, and they couldn't produce any information, and we put it out there. So I'm just asking as we move forward that we are very aware that we need to make sure that everybody gets the same level of information. Thank you so much. I'll move for approval.
Can I get a second?
Second.
The motion is second on C 22. If everybody please vote when it comes up. And that is approved. Thank you very much. We have one general consent item, G seven. Clerk, please read that one.
Item G seven, resolution awarding construction contract for Winston Lake Golf Course Tree Removal Project.
Okay. Can I have a quick presentation so everybody knows what's going on?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, members of the committee. Back in June of 2022, we received approximately $719,000 of two-thirds GO bonds for improvements in Winston Lake Golf Course. Originally, this funding was scheduled to assist the city with smoothing fairways, add grass to areas impacted by erosion and invasive vegetation removal. In July of 2022, we received an additional $1 million from limited obligation bonds to improve some of the same issues, grading, fairway improvements, bunker and tee box, tee box renovations, as well as tree removal. After several meetings with the golf community and city staff, a decision was made to use the money to perform tree clearing at Winston Lake Golf Course. The tree canopy around the golf course had not had any substantial maintenance over the past 30 to 40 years, and it was the number one contributing factor to many, many of the aesthetic as well as the maintenance issues that we had to address there at the course. Knowing this, we advertised for professional services, hired Richard Mandell, a landscape architect that has extensive experience working with golf courses, to design a master plan that would include phasing options for Phase One. This project was bid twice, once in January of this year and again in June. In the first bid, two out of the three proposals that we received did not include all of the required NWBE information, and the specifications also had to be adjusted because of additional erosion control measures that were required by the state. In 2000, well, in July of this year, we had five companies that submitted bids. Those were reviewed and scored by staff. Based on the valuation of these proposals, it's recommended that a contract for the Phase One tree removal be awarded to W. Brown Construction LLC in the amount of $720,655.27. In your packet, you also see a list, list of businesses that were notified of the bidding and a map of the areas where the work is to be performed.
Questions or comments? Miss Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Royce, and I am so happy to see this. This has been a long journey.
Yes.
Almost, what, 15 years?
If not longer than...
And even before that, I was coming to city council and whatever, advocating that we do more way back, because I've been playing golf since 1995, 6... Because I've been playing golf since 1995, '96. So, the course looked great then because we had the great Ernie Morris and Bobby Wooden. They loved that course. They took ownership of it and they didn't allow you to do anything that made that course look bad or any type of activities. They owned it. I was telling Sister Manager King, Sister Manager Page, and Councilwoman Clark, and the mayor, I have played every municipal course in the county and beyond because I've always wanted to see what their courses look like, that they manage and own compared to ours. And over the years, I can say, even in the past three to five, this year alone, I've played several of them. Their courses don't look like ours. Our courses don't look like theirs. As a matter of fact, their courses look 200, 300% most of them than ours better. The grass, the fairways, the cutbacks. You can tell over the years, I've seen them cut the trees back for a better line of sight for golfers to play, beginners or pros or whoever. And we haven't done that. We've done some improvements, and I know. But I am hoping that this initiative will kick off us bringing the lake back to its greatness that it was when I first started playing almost 30 years ago. I look forward to it. I really do. Everywhere I go, everybody talks about Winston Lake, that they played it maybe once or that they're afraid of it because the lake is a very challenging, tight course. But I can tell you this, if we do the improvements that your department and staff, the city manager has set forth, along with the historical notifications that we've gotten and some other things hopefully down the pike, much like I was at Gillespie Park this past week, where they did the mural unveiling of the Greensboro Six, the first African-Americans that integrated a municipal course in Greensboro. The course is in fabulous shape. The Wyndham was there, the players were there, crowd, the families and grandchildren of these six gentlemen. I am hoping with our historical journey that we've been on trying to get the notifications to Winston Lake, that we also see a pathway to doing a narrative justice story about Winston Lake as well as Reynolds Park. But thank you for, I'm looking forward to seeing the success.
Thank you.
Get a motion.
I move for approval.
Your second.
Second.
Mr. Craig.
What is the work schedule on this? Are golf courses going to be handled during the study?
We're going to have some discussions with the contractor about, I believe, the plans are to close nine holes, do the work on half of the course and then do the other nine holes. There's additional work that we will be doing concurrently while the construction is going on, so we'll focus that on the side of the course that's being currently worked on.
What, the course will be open?
Yes. Our intention is to keep the course open. Over the past few years, we've done a lot of work and we've had to close the course, reopen it. I think we should do whatever we can to keep at least a portion of that course open as well as, we're doing some work on the driving range as well so that the course is something for people to do when they get there.
Correct. Okay. Everybody please vote. That is approved. Thank you. That's it. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I know you're happy to see some of those trees moved out of the.
Yeah. Well, I've hit that and leased that.
Let me call on the city manager for update.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two quick items for you. One is that we, as council know, you approved us moving forward with the class and compensation study implementation for this year. So, there are a few things that are going to be coming back to council to finalize that. And Marcus is here to give a quick update of where we're at on the process. We are moving forward to that first pay period in October for an implementation. And he's going to give you a quick update of where we're at and what you're going to be seeing here in the next couple of meetings.
Good afternoon, Mayor Joines, Mayor Pro Tem Adams and members of the council.
Good afternoon.
As you all know, my name is Marcus Barnett. I'm the human resources director here at the city of Winston-Salem. At the request of this council and with the permission of this council, we have been able to complete a comprehensive classification and compensation study. We reviewed all classification, all of our classifications within city government. We reviewed the compensation levels for all of our employees. As our consultant came to you all in the budget forecast and had a conversation with you all about in June, we are marching quickly towards being able to implement that full study. As part of that full study, and we've had the budget conversations, now we are moving into the next phase. So, we have opened the employee performance appraisal process for all of our employees that opened last week and it will close at the end of this, no, I'm sorry, opened two weeks ago and it will close at the end of this week. All employees who are deemed as being, all employees hired before July 1st, 2024, who are deemed as having met expectations for last year, will be eligible for a one-time 4% increase to their base salary. Following that, all employees will be brought up to the new minimums of all classifications that they are in. So, if you've got an employee who got a 4%, but is still below their new minimum, they will then be brought up to that new minimum. Finally, we will be looking at what we're calling right now equity adjustments. So, equity adjustments are how we're going to address employees who have been in classifications for a long amount of time. What we don't want is for a person to be making the exact same amount of money as they're making as someone in that classification that's been there for a year, if they've been in that classification for, say, 15 years. So, we've worked out a formula with MAG, Management Advisory Group International, the consultant that came and spoke with you all. So, we've worked out a formula that will account for time and grade, total time of service with the organization and this whole other complex, what they call compa ratio formula. So, once all of those things are done, we will implement them in three waves, but all on the same pay period. So, we'll do first, the 4%, which will go to all employees who are meeting expectations. Second, we will do, we will raise people up to their new minimums if they were below their new minimums. And then, finally, we'll add on that equity adjustment. Now, of course, we're not going to solve every compensation issue that exists in the organization right there, but we continue the commitment to look into these disparities as they come up. Employees will have an opportunity to get back with us to let us know that, hey, the class and comp study was done and I still feel like maybe my position is not where it's supposed to be in the market or I found additional information. We will take those on a case-by-case basis because we do have a lot of positions in our organization that are specific to what we do as an organization or as a municipality. So, some of our positions, maybe they didn't have market peers for us to compare them to or there was limited data available. So, again, we'll handle all of those issues as they come up. But by and large, I do believe that we're going to be moving towards a more equitable compensation system. We're also reviewing a lot of our compensation policies. How do we classify our employees? How do we move them? How much are we paying employees when they are promoted from within a program that we often push to our employees? So, we're looking at all of that as well as drafting and implementing what we are calling our compensation philosophy. How do we compensate our employees? How do we classify them fairly, equitably in order for us to continue to be leaders, not just in this market, but also as an employer of choice? I'm happy to take any questions, but I do believe we'll be bringing, next month, we should be bringing every item that will address a lot of the issues that we have been seeing.
Question on the equity compensation part, last part. Someone's salary has to get adjusted because there, is there a new classification that you're adjusting it for, correct? Not their old?
So, it'll be, so let's say, for example, we change their classification on the, but we are still doing it based off of how long they have been in that classification. So, even if, let's say, they were in a classification that was a grade nine, but that is now, I'm just throwing out a number, that is now a grade 17 on the, we are still going to take the amount of time that they were in that grade nine to drive that equity, the equity adjustment.
And the adjustment would be within the range for the new job?
Correct.
But not necessarily at the maximum?
Correct. Yeah. So, the formula has been built and we've revised it, what, probably six times at this point? So, but we have addressed, we have done everything that we can to make sure that we do not create additional equity issues in doing the equity adjustment.
And I think just to that question, just to be clear, there's very few, there's no positions that we're looking to move to the maximum. Our job rates are within the ranges. And so, that's why we're looking to move people closer to the job rates, not to the maximum of the ranges.
It's max.
So, we did, we have a budget and we anticipated this. We feel like we're going to be within that number we set.
We will absolutely stay within the number that you've allocated.
That's a good one.
One other question. Did we learn something about this study about where we were? Were we really out of line on most things or were we better in, at some areas? I don't remember us getting the report yet, but I just, just a slight overview. How bad were we?
So, we found that in some places, we absolutely lead the market. In terms of what we have done for public safety, we largely have exceeded what many of our peers and just other people in our study were doing for their public safety. So, we are very proud of that. But we also did find that we were significantly behind the market in a lot of our different areas across the organization. And so, as we looked at each of those, you know, there were some places where we performed very well, other places where we didn't perform as well. But on average, as we looked at everything on balance, we ended up being somewhere around about the 60% range. And in order to be an employer of choice, especially if you have very competitive benefits like we have, you're looking to be anywhere from about 71% to 75%, right? That's what's going to make you really an excellent employer. So, that's where we are constantly marching towards, is being somewhere closer to that 70, 75% range in terms of market compensation.
Generally speaking, the largest people that were, that are changing are because you changed our minimum from roughly $14, $15 an hour to almost $18 an hour. So, those folks that are in those positions that are at the lower ends of our ranges are going to be seeing most of the highest increases this year.
One of the things that we all have to keep in mind is the world we live in right now, young people, professionals that are out there looking to change jobs, careers, relocate, they look at all the metrics that's out there that can tell them whether a city is performing as an employer that they would like to work for. Not just our metrics on poverty and education in our city, but now they have a choice and they have platforms that you can plug in a city, plug in the job, whether it's a municipality or whatever, and it'll tell you everything about that job based on the housing costs, whether that city is in line with maybe three or four other cities around it of almost like sizes. So, it is very, very important that we now begin to strike the balance of getting where we need to be if we're going to be the city that people want to come here to work, love to work, love to stay, raise their families, and whether our citizens will want to even work for our city. But I think we're on the right track. I really do, Dr. Barnett. And Mr. Page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then, just finally, just as a reminder, tomorrow, we will be having a budget, I mean, a council work session at the Lowry Center. There will be some food the clerk has always tends to make available for you around noon. And we will start with the school of government at 1:00. They're going to be focusing some on best practices, opportunities of how we can engage our community better in terms of how we operate. And one key thing for me and the staff is hearing a little bit more about what we need to do in terms of incorporating our new council members after the next election into the board as a whole. So, things for our orientation and policies and practices that we, to make sure that we're consistent among and in terms of educating them as they come on the board as to what their roles are and responsibilities. So, that'll be starting tomorrow at 1:00 at Lowry Street.
Do we have an anticipated finish time tomorrow or is it going to run as it possibly?
Yes, we're going to have you out by 10:30 tomorrow night. 4:30, 4 to 4:30.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else for the orderly order?
Just have one little question. And since we voted as a committee of the whole on many of these items, do we still have to vote for them again at the council meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Committee of the whole means you still have to vote for me at a regular council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Can motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Thank you, motion. Councilman Marcus and Mayor Pro Tem all favor adjournments. Say aye.
Aye.